All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm pleased this morning that we have Pastor Womack with Marietta Seventh Day Adventist Church, who will be providing our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
You're very welcome. You can hold on one moment. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation.
All right, let's pray. Father, on this beautiful day, we give thanks. Scripture says, "This is the day that the Lord has made, so let us rejoice and be glad in it." So may our hearts be open, our hands open to receive and to give. May our words be pure and true. Bless us with your Spirit. We pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our meeting is now called to order, and I'll turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to queue up today's agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We ask that when a case is called, the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. And after that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We'd also ask the opposition to please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. Then, after recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward and be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets ten minutes to state their case or their concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your ten-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to discuss, because you don't want to cover the same information over and over within the ten-minute time period. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to their front for additional comments and questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case before them. There are three cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z thirty of two thousand and twenty-four, Bentley Residential Properties LLC, Summer Hour Properties LLP, the estate of James W. Bentley, James W. Bentley, Jr. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice, so Z thirty of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-four, Belmont Fine Homes LLC, this case was withdrawn without prejudice, so rezoning case Z fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. And lastly, LUP twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four, Scott D. Smith, this case has been withdrawn without prejudice, so UP twenty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, we did get, we did talk to the applicant for one of the other cases here today, Other Business Item Number Thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, Noshart Ahmed, and the applicant would like to withdraw this case without prejudice and bring it back at a future date, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay, one moment, John.
Yes, OB fifty-four.
Okay, if only you'd tell me.
OB thirty-eight.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you. Can you ask, is the applicant here and any opposition?
The applicant is present. Mr. Ahmed is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Thirty-eight?
Yeah, same. Okay, there's some property dispute between the applicant and neighbor, and until that gets settled through the courts, I'm going to make a motion that this be withdrawn.
And that's...
With or without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, motion carries, five-zero.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have either been held or continued by the Stafford Planning Commission, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z two of two thousand and twenty-four, Florinway Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z four, Z two of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Thomas Orick, this case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z nine of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four, Bosco IKEA Kenanen, this case was held by the Planning Commission until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z thirty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Asher Homes Inc. LLC, this case was continued by the staff until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z thirty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z forty of two thousand and twenty-four, Manor Restorations LLC, this case was continued by the staff until the November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z forty-four of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z forty of two thousand and twenty-four, Elite Engineering, this case was continued by the staff until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z forty of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four, American Dream Homes LLC and Katharina Ikage, this case was held by the Planning Commission until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z forty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case Z forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Blue River Development LLC, this case was continued by the staff until the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Case LUP twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, David Gaddy, this case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z twenty-five of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Resoning case, pardon me, Land use permit case twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-four, Lucas Rubio Levatin was continued by the Planning Commission until the October first, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number Forty-four of two thousand and twenty-four, Hilltop Rough Snow LLC and Hilltop TIC LP, this case was held by the Board of Commissioners until the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number Forty-four will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number Forty-nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Amanda Benetti STNL Development, this case was continued by the staff until the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number Forty-nine, two thousand and twenty-four will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request late last week to continue two more cases on your agenda, and that's case, and these cases are connected, so it's rezoning case Z forty-three and SLOP nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Campus Realty Advisors LLC. The applicant has asked in this case to be continued. Madam Chair and Board, they're in discussions with Kennesaw State University, and they need thirty more days of time to complete their case.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, I would certainly like to motion to continue these two cases, both C forty-three and SLOP nine, until the next zoning hearing, which is dated October twenty-first.
You had to ask.
Fifteenth.
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 Second.
And the discussion.
Okay. Okay.
And then if the clerk could also record my statement, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, call the question. Motion carries, five-zero.
Okay, another case, Madam Chair and Board, is rezoning case Z thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-four, Boudoir Properties LLC. The staff is asking the board to continue this case. Madam Chair and Board, they did submit revised site plan, and we would like to have the stormwater staff and Frank Gibson take a look at it prior to the board hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to hold Z thirty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, to the October fifteenth Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Continue.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Second. All right, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries, five-zero.
Okay, then lastly, Madam Chair and Board, the staff would ask the board to continue Other Business Item Number Fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-four, which is Mars Hill Community Church. There are some staff comments that the applicant would like to discuss with DOT and the District Commissioner, so the staff would ask the board to continue Other Business Item Number Fifty-six until your October fifteenth hearing.
All right, Commissioner Gamble?
I'd like to make a moment, a motion to continue OB fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-four until the October fifteenth hearing date.
Second. All right, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries, five-zero.
Okay, before we start the hearing, I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn your cell phone off, because when they ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. And any person, and I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. With that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
All right, thank you.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. First case on consent is rezoning case Z thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-four, Emily G. Dunn, request a rezoning from GC to NRC for retail warehouse in landlot sixty of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Canton Road, north of Jamison Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z thirty-two to the NRC zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, District Commissioner to approve the final site plan. Number two, District Commissioner to approve the final use. Number three, parking to meet code requirements. Number four, no outdoor storage. Number five, no automotive or warehouse uses, however showroom use is permitted. Number six, variances as stated in the zoning comments and recommendations. Number seven, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number eight, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number nine, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number ten, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z thirty-two? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case on consent is rezoning case Z thirty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, Chuck Awuzu, request rezoning from RA six and NRC to RSL for a residential senior living, which is supportive residential units, in landlots six-twenty-one, six-thirty-eight, and six-thirty-nine of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Powder Springs Road and on the northeast side of Pear Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z thirty-five to the RSL supportive zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of sixty-six units. Number two, construction hours shall be Monday through Friday from seven a.m. to eight p.m., Saturday from nine a.m. to six p.m., and no work on Sunday. Number three, final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. Number four, final architectural elevations to be approved by the District Commissioner. Number five, maximum purview service not to exceed seventy percent for NRC. Number six, for the NRC portion, prohibited uses includes no billiards or pool halls, no drive-through restaurants, no vape shops, and no light auto repair. Number seven, all staff comments or recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z thirty-five? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Chair, I'd like to add a condition. I'd like to include a conditions to read. A dumpster enclosure is to be designed to complement the building architecture while meeting all development standards with a design approved by the District Commissioner, and the dumpster lids are to contain rubber cushion to reduce noise, and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant amenable to those additions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next case is rezoning case Z forty-five of two thousand and twenty-four, Jeff Kwan, request rezoning from RA eighty to RA thirty for a single-family residence in landlot four-sixty-three of the nineteenth district. The property is located on the north side of Macklin Road, west of Gus Robinson Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z forty-five to the RA thirty zoning district subject to the following conditions. Number one, single-family use only. Number two, adherence to the Macklin Road Design Guidelines. Number three, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number four, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number five, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-five? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case is rezoning case Z forty-six of two thousand and twenty-four, Charles Milo, request a rezoning from GC to TS for automotive paint and body repair in landlot four-twenty-two of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the northwest corner of Ledford Street and Atlanta Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of Z forty-six to the TS zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. Number two, all vehicles must be parked in striped parking spaces. Number three, no outdoor storage or outdoor displays of merchandise. Number four, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number five, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Number six, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-six? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case is rezoning case Z forty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four, Kenniston Hospital Inc., request a rezoning from LRC to ONI for an urgent care clinic in landlots two-sixteen and two-forty-one of the twentieth district. The property is located at the southeast intersection of Kennesaw-Dewest Road and Stylesborough Road. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z forty-eight to the LRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan revised on July twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, urgent care clinic use will be permitted under the LRC zoning district. Number three, District Commissioner to approve the final elevations, signage, and landscaping. Number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number five, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number six, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. And number seven, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicants are here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-eight? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case is rezoning case Z fifty of two thousand and twenty-four, A One Auto Coors LLC, request rezoning from RA twenty to LI for automotive repair in landlot two-ninety-two of the seventeenth district. The property is located on the south side of Pearl Street, east of South Cobb Drive. The Planning Commission recommends deletion of Z fifty to the TS zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on July ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number three, variances one and three as stated in the zoning comments and recommendations to be approved. Number four, all vehicles to be parked in paved striped parking spaces, no vehicles to be parked on grass or gravel. Number five, no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise. Number six, forty-foot landscape buffer to be installed, maintained on the southern property line. Number seven, the property to be cleaned up and not lived in by the time of construction or business license. Number eight, Fire Department comments and recommendations. Number nine, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations. Number ten, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations. And number eleven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z fifty? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into Other Business Cases on the consent agenda. First case is Other Business Item Number Forty-six of two thousand and twenty-four, which is to consider a reduction of required minimum public road frontage from required seventy-five feet to thirty feet for Roger D. Sloan and Linda A. Sloan. The property is located on the north side of Bates Road, east of Floyd Road, in landlots nine-ninety-eight and nine-ninety-nine of the eighteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, water and sewer comments; number two, Fire Department comments; and number three, Cobb DOT comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicants are here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Forty-six? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Chair, I'd like to add a condition. Thank you. If the clerk can add a condition, that one-zero-five-zero Bates Road and the parcel identified as OB forty-six on the survey dated July tenth, two thousand and twenty-four cannot be divided into smaller lots and may only have one single family dwelling per parcel, and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Okay. Is the applicant amenable to that additional condition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next case is Other Business Item Number Fifty of two thousand and twenty-four, which is to consider a reduction of required minimum lot size for proposed lot thirteen from twenty thousand square feet to seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet by Isla and Chetty. The property is located at the northeast intersection of Bills Ferry Road and Janice Drive in landlot seven-thirteen of the sixteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to Stormwater Management comments, number two, Cobb DOT comments, and number three, lot thirteen approved to be seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-five square feet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty of two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number Fifty-one of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider a reduction of required minimum lot size from twenty thousand square feet to nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four square feet for Nicholas Mahagas. The property is located on the east side of Shaw Road, north of Oak Creek Drive, in landlot four-eighty-nine of the sixteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, lot size is approved to be nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-four square feet; number two, Cobb DOT comments; and number three, Stormwater Management comments, with Stormwater Management approving the final plan. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty-one? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, Commissioner.
I would like to also add that the minimum square footage of the house be twenty-four-hundred... Did you read that into the record?
No.
Okay. And the final site plan and elevations to be approved by the District Commissioner.
Just clarification, twenty-four-hundred square feet.
Right.
Okay.
Just twenty-four-hundred.
Twenty-four-hundred square feet, minimum.
Yes.
And the applicant?
Yes, is the applicant?
Yes.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next case is Other Business Item Number Fifty-two of two thousand and twenty-four, which is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Martin Hareta regarding rezoning application Z sixty-three of two thousand and twenty-three. The property is located on the east side of Santown Road, north of Gan Road, in landlot two-eleven of the seventeenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, Stormwater Management comments; number two, Cobb DOT comments; number three, Fire Department comments; number four, site plan submitted August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four; and number five, all previous stipulations not in conflict remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty-two? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number Fifty-three of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider amending the stipulations for BAPS Atlanta-Kennesaw LLC regarding rezoning application Z one-fifty-one of nineteen ninety-five. The property is located on the east side of Chastain Meadows Parkway, south of Chastain Road, in landlots four-twenty-seven and four-twenty-eight of the sixteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to number one, places of worship are added to permitted uses for this property; number two, Cobb DOT comments; and number three, Fire Department comments. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty-three? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number Fifty-five of two thousand and twenty-four is to consider a reduction of required minimum lot size from twenty thousand square feet to fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet for Joselia Cruz. The property is located on the north side of Cranfield Road at Clearview Drive, or excuse me, at Clearview Street, in landlot two-ninety-eight of the seventeenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, lot size is approved to be fifteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven square feet; number two, Cobb DOT comments; and number three, Fire Department comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Fifty-five? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next item is Other Business Item Number Fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-four, which is to consider amending the stipulations for the Stonehaven School Inc. regarding application SLEP nine of two thousand and nineteen for a property located on the west side of Old Concord Road, east of Pine Street, north of Cranfield Road, in landlots two-ninety-seven and two-ninety-eight of the seventeenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications; number two, Stormwater Management comments; number three, Cobb DOT comments; and number four, Fire Department comments. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty-seven? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And the final item on Other Business is Number Fifty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four, which is to consider amending the site plan for Tyler Channel Homes LLC regarding application Z seventeen of two thousand and twenty-two. The property is located on the south side of McQuarrie Road and on the west side of Acworth-Dewest Road, in landlot one-twenty-two of the twentieth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the District Commissioner approving minor modifications; number two, Stormwater Management comments; number three, Cobb DOT comments; and number four, Fire Department comments. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number Fifty-eight? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, are there any other matters that need to be added to consent? Okay, not seeing any. I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, and, John, I'm noting that cases Z forty-three, SLOP nine, and Other Business Item Fifty-six have been removed.
Correct.
Okay. Second. All right, is there any additional discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
I'd like the clerk to note my opposition to OB fifty-one.
Are there any other comments? All right, call the question. The motion carries, five-zero. For those of you who are here as a part of the consent agenda, you're free to leave at this time unless you just like to observe the other cases on our agenda. And for all others, we'll give them about a couple minutes for them to leave the room before we get started with the rest of our agenda. All right, John, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, moving into the continued case. First case we're going to hear today also has a companion special land use permit with it, Madam Chairman and Board, whether it be the board's wish to hear both cases together and then make separate motions on both cases. Okay?
Boom. Commissioner Richardson, I defer to you.
In agreement with that.
Okay. All right, rezoning case Z-25 of 2024, LCD Acquisitions LLC, Town Park Renaissance LLC, request rezoning from OMR to RRC for the purpose of purpose-built student housing in land lots three fifty-eight and three sixty-three of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Town Park Drive, north of Town Park Lane, together with its special land use permit, special land use permit number six of 2024, LCD Acquisitions LLC, Town Park Renaissance LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of purpose-built student housing in land lots three fifty-eight and three sixty-three of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the east side of Town Park Drive, north of Town Park Lane. The applicant is present. All those who are opposed, please stand up and raise your hand. Eleven?
Did you count that gentleman right behind you? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let the record show there's eleven people here opposed. All those who support the application, please stand up and raise your hands. Let the record show there's seventeen people here in support of the rezoning case and the special land use permit. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Up. The law firm is Sam's Lockner Huff, and I represent Landmark in relation to this rezoning application before you. Aaron is going to get up here and make a presentation on behalf of Landmark. Want to just emphasize that the people that are here in support are part of the people that are recognizing that there is a desperate need for student housing. The folks who are here represent the thousand people on the list to get on student housing and the other students that are trying to find housing elsewhere. So we appreciate your time, and Aaron's going to come up here and walk you through a presentation.
All right. I just, first off, wanted to thank everyone for coming here today, both members of the board and members of the community. At this point, we've met with many of you on one or more occasions. We've also met with the opposition for this project on three separate occasions, depending on which group, and you'll undoubtedly hear from them today. They're going to tell you that this project is not needed to address existing in future supply. They will tell you that there's traffic concerns this project creates. They'll tell you that, you know, students are reprehensible in their behavior and the overall safety of the project are key concerns, and they'll tell you that they don't think it's right for this location and they think the density is too great. The presentation that we're providing today is going to address those concerns and what we're doing to mitigate them to the extent possible and ultimately why this project deserves your vote. So with that, you could see the first image here on the screen is a picture of the project. Yeah, obviously, you can see the landscaping that we're doing in addition to the building itself. Moving on, here's another image. It's a little bit closer to the building. And here is an overall site plan, which demonstrates the two courtyards, as well as the rooftop terrace area as well, and the structured parking and infill-style design of the project. So let's first hit on why this is appropriate and necessary. So purpose-built student housing in Kennesaw, you know, there's approximately eleven existing projects in the market, which constitute approximately seven thousand beds. Per Cobb County's own report in 2018, it stressed the types of developments that should get done, where they should get done, and the density upon which they should get done. It also identified, you know, how important it was to the continued growth of Kennesaw, which since 2018, you know, we've obviously seen quite a bit of. You can see that it encourages density high enough for private developers to produce purpose-built housing in desirable locations. And in our opinion, being as this is in a regional activity center, this is appropriate for this location. On this slide, we contrast what a typical student housing market is relative to KSU's current supply of housing. The supply of housing is roughly divided up into three groups. You have on-campus housing, you have purpose-built off-campus housing, which is what this project is, and then you have the shadow market, which is a generic term meant to describe any type of housing that students might be living in that isn't designed and catered to their needs. That typically describes both multifamily projects as well as single-family homes, basements, accessory dwellings, and things of that nature. The bottom chart represents a pretty comparable university in the state of Georgia. We actually did a similar pie chart for members of kind of the Southeast Conference, Big Ten, other kind of comparably sized schools to Kennesaw, and it's all relatively consistent within those groupings. The key point to note here is the size of the shadow market. As you can see, Kennesaw State represents, students represent seventy-one percent, seventy-one percent of all Kennesaw students are living in what's called the shadow market. One of the challenges with that is that it forces residents to live within the neighborhoods of long-term residents and creates conflict within communities, and I think you're going to hear some of that today. Traffic at a high level, you know, is something that we've studied, and one of the things that you'll see here, I mean, we've got a traffic report, and during peak hours, we're roughly consistent with the existing traffic flows in the neighborhood. However, that chart does not take into account the fact that we're going to be having a private shuttle associated with the project. It's something that we've rolled out on the retreat Kennesaw as well and has been highly successful. Matter of fact, approximately fifty percent of all trips to and from our property at the retreat are done via the shuttle. So these traffic counts, while not taking them into account, you know, I think if they were, it would be a substantial reduction to the amount of traffic that is experienced in this immediate area. Another important thing to mention is that, you know, students don't typically go with, you know, kind of peaked peak hours. They tend to slowly trickle in and trickle out throughout the day, and I think ultimately that's why you see what you see in this chart. On this slide, we're showing the transportation to campus map. So you could see where the standard is located immediately east of, on the east side of Town Park Drive. You could see that it is a relatively direct route to campus, making a left out of the property and coming across the skipspan connector and into campus's core. Both our private shuttle, and you can see the Big Al Bus Stop there as well, both our private shuttle and the Big Al Bus Stop cross the skipspan bridge. And given the county and city and state's investment in the skipspan connector of roughly fifteen million dollars, in that, in the report and in the acquisition of those funds, it was stressed to reduce traffic along Chastain Boulevard. They would need, you know, they would need people to actually use the skipspan connector. And our project furthers that desire by putting students in position to avoid major traffic thoroughfares and utilize the most direct route to campus. You could see here, we, just a couple of quick slides, couple bullet points on the skipspan bridge. On this slide, we hit comparable properties to campus, and this is, you know, roughly your eleven purpose-built student housing projects. As you can see, the standard would roughly be the third closest to campus of any of the comps in the market, with drive times of five minutes and walking times of approximately twenty minutes. Biking would be roughly halfway in between those two, so just over a ten-minute bike ride. And while we do think our students, you know, will ultimately walk, you know, I think our broader point on this is that it's, you know, I think biking and likely our shuttle service will be the primary uses of transportation between our property and the campus. On this slide, you could just see a layout of where all the purpose-built student housing is currently located. The 2040 comp plan for Cobb County had a lot of goals, right? It stressed growth management, redevelopment and revitalization, land use and transportation coordination, as well as property uses that provide jobs. Our opinion is that this project achieves all of those goals. If, if this board elects to not approve this project, it would be advocating for an anti-growth approach to this regional activity center. And our view is that this project is both important and necessary for the revitalization of that area in light of the suffering office market in the immediate vicinity of our project. And as you can see on the office slide here, you know, there's been, and we can, you're welcome, I think a lot of you probably have read through this already, but the gist of it is that this entire area, regional activity center, and all of the office properties in it are in some state of receivership right now, which, for those that don't know, what that means is that they're in a form of distress. Maybe they're not in foreclosure, maybe the banks are attempting to work with them, but they're all underperforming. And ultimately, this, this area needs to be repurposed and revitalized to allow its continued prosperity, and our project intends to do that. As you can see here, you know, this, this is a list of all of the, the tax, the tax receipts that the county receives for each purpose-built project in the area, as well as, you know, what our projections are for the standard as of the time we deliver. You know, we at this time estimate this to roughly add nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the tax rolls. And, and while that, why that's important, just so everyone understands, this project is not going to be a drain on county resources. That's, that's all the size intended to show. I'm not here, sitting here today and asking you to approve this project because of its tax revenue. I know, you know, that's not appropriate, but don't believe that this is going to be a drain on county resources. We will be contributing more than our fair share. This map is intended to present to you, you know, what is in this area. And I know many of you, including the public at large, have visited this site. You know, they've, they've walked it, toured it, driven it probably more than once in the last six months. As you can see here, you know, the standard, which is located in the northeastern portion of this map, is listed, and all around it is, in the immediate vicinity, is office. And then as you progress closer to Town Park Townhomes, you know, you can see seven-story hotels, as well as tin lizies and a rooftop bar. I mean, this is a true mixed-use area. And right now, within that, you know, within that kind of vicinity, I'd say it's, you know, it's clearly heavy on office, but it also is heavy on retail. Our students, residents, I'm sorry, our residents will be working and eating at a lot of those restaurants, those retail locations, and, you know, it feels appropriate for the area in light of the.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, your ten minutes are up.
Okay. So I'll just flip through to the very end, if that's okay, and draw a conclusion.
Sir, there's, I'm sorry, there's no additional time left.
Okay, you got it. Thank you very much for your time.
Good morning, Board. I'm Robin Gahetta. I'm a resident of Town Park. I'm also the president of the HOA Board, and I'm here representing my community and the Bell's Ferry Civic Association in opposition to Z-25 and SULP six. For the record, I'd like to state this morning that the only people who put their hands up and supported this rezoning case previous today were the property owner and developer. All of these people that we've seen today, we haven't seen them in six months. Conversely, we had forty people in opposition to this last month. In addition to that, we have eleven people in the audience here in opposition. We have lived here for eight years, my wife and I. We have an established presence. I'm a graduate of KSU. I'm a former instructor at KSU. I've spent fifteen years tutoring students in mathematics at KSU, serving the higher rungs of Maslow's hierarchy. The opposition here is, also includes teachers and former instructors. The developer here has, on multiple occasions, mentioned that we are anti-student. We do not make a profit from people's lowest needs on the hierarchy. We are educators. We help people reach their goals in life. We are not anti-student. In fact, we supported a development across the street because we believed that, in good faith, the developer wanted to work with our community, and we are not against businesses and we're not against developing this area. So our townhome is located within a thousand feet of this proposed development, and this gives us standing to sue and appeal the decision, should it be approved. This rezoning case will have negative consequences on our home values, our quality of life, our health, and we'll do whatever it takes to, just to protect our homes. Can we go to the next slide? So we hired an attorney, Jonathan Baker, to represent us, and on our behalf, he submitted a preservation of constitutional rights letter to the BLC that it must be denied due to the fact that the development will have significant adverse effects on the neighborhood and will result in a nuisance as defined interstate law. Can we go to the next slide? Town Park serves as an office complex comprised of fifteen buildings. The majority of the buildings are struggling and are in bankruptcy, and so they're in jeopardy of being sold to other PBSHs if this rezoning request is approved and this precedent is set. A better use for this location would be additional townhomes, condos, senior living. This would generate the same tax revenue as a PBSH. The owner of this property is in financial straits and is requesting a premium for the lot. That cannot be used in consideration on how much profit the developer will make, hence this high density to make a profit. Slide, next slide. So originally, this is good, yep, Z-20, Z-52 was requested to build a six-story apartment building consisting of two hundred and eighty-five units, and it was determined to be too dense. So instead, it was approved for five stories, and this reduction in density allowed for two hundred and twenty-nine units with a max impervious surface of seventy percent. The net density is sixty-five units per acre. This application is requesting an equivalent of three hundred and eighty-one apartment units with a net density of eighty-two units per acre. The other PBSH zoning request, Z-43, is only requesting to build a four-story with a density of twenty-six. That's a very big difference. In addition, the applicant, the applicant states that the impervious amount will be no greater than seventy percent, but the only way they can meet that requirement is by using pervious pavers. The additional stormwater will affect, negatively affect Chastain Lakes. Next slide. Cobb DOT comments that Town Park Drive generates an average of five thousand fifty daily trips. Once the adjacent apartment complex is completed, it'll add over a thousand trips. We do not see people riding their bikes to campus. And that route that the, I guess, the developer showed of zero-point-seven miles, there's no route on Google Maps that gives you zero-point-seven miles. We mentioned this before. It's very simple to show that the route that goes along a one-lane road in front of our townhomes is, there's no zero-point-seven mile route along that road. So it's just, it's not true. It's not as close as they're stating, and besides being on a minor collector road, we're talking about a one-lane road, two one-lane roads with now additional traffic. Can we go to slide seven? PBSH is not affordable housing and costs more than on-campus housing. KSU is not supporting this. KSU is not in support of this project. No homeowners are in support of this project. The adjacent developer is not in support of this project. This is what we look at every single day. Can we go to the next one? This is what it looks like right now. This is yesterday from a Ring cam. Can we go to the next one? Now, that's the two-lane road that goes to I-575. The one-lane road that goes in front of our homes is, we can't even get off of that road onto Chastain Road with the existing traffic of, you know, flex workers who are, you know, half of the time not in the office. It looks like that, the way it is now. So you add additional cars, and we all know that students drive to campus. They're not riding their bikes, they're not walking, they're riding to campus. So this is what we deal with on a daily already. This is already an inconvenience, and we're going to add insult to injury. PBSHs are not affordable. If this case is approved, it'll be the twelfth PBSH to be built, and there are nearly eight thousand available beds right now, just PBSH beds, not the shadow, quote, shadow market beds. There's. There's 8,000 beds available. There's no need for additional off-campus student housing. Only one, one only needs to Google apartments.com, KSU off-campus housing, to see that there are over 10,776 apartments, and of those, 2,977 of them are available. Next slide. The Retreat is the other PBSH owned by Landmark. It was completed two years ago. It was approved to consist of 342 units with 685 bedrooms. Without anybody knowing, only 173 of those were built, which decreased the number of one- and two-bedroomed units, saving the developer money, going against the agreement they made with the county. Online reviews say that there's issues with security, you know, there's, there's not, onsite management should be required 24 hours per day, but we see from online reviews that there are issues with broken gates, there's a lack of security, local police have to deal with the noise. We need to be able to rely on local police ourselves as residents, and to be stretched further by these highly dense, you know, PBSHs is not fair. The developer quietly reneged on the number of units, is not maintaining their current PBSH, and is in violation of county code. Why should we believe their promises? Next slide. In summary, we request that you deny Z25 and SULP6. It will negatively affect our townhome value. No one wants that building to be here, including KSU. All of us residents, we bought into this community, we're all professionals, we pay our taxes, we just don't want it there. It could be somewhere else, but just not in that location. That, that area is just too congested as it is. It's just not a good place for it. So basically, we hope you're not in favor of supporting a multi-billion-dollar company that has no ties to this area, instead of supporting Cobb residents who call this area their home. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are any additional speakers, there are about two minutes left on the clock.
My name's Jeff Warshaw, and I'm happy to be in front of you today. I represent 360 Residential. We were the developer that is developing Z52. We were before this commission, a little over, almost, it'll be two years next month that we were approved. And I think we showed exactly how cooperation with the neighborhood is supposed to work. We worked with our neighbors, and we were required to reduce our density, enhance our project, and we had to agree to some conditions that have been adopted and are actually a deed restriction now on our title. The condition was put in place to prohibit students from living there. Now, we don't discriminate against students. We want students to live there, but what we did is we put in a provision that says that if they can't qualify on their own, they cannot go get a guarantor or parent guarantor to, to help them guarantee. And that's the case with most students. And so that was put in precisely to deal with the neighborhood's concern about students and not wanting to have students at this location. They're single-family homeowners. We respected that. We want to build a high-quality product for a market segment that we believe is missing in this area, a boutique, high-end apartment that caters to professionals in the area, not just with KSU, but professionals in the area. And my question, you know, the only thing that I have to say really is, I mean, I'm a big fan of Landmark. I think they've done a great job. I think they're a great company. I think they create a great product. But I would ask the commission, how do you square that with us? No students?
Sir, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Purpose-built students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I will turn things now over to the district commissioner.
Thank you. And certainly appreciate everyone's commentary as I'm trying to get all caught up on all of the different pieces. And I've spoken with a couple of members of the community and certainly with the applicant as well. There are several questions I do want us to go through with the, with some members of staff, and then some observations as well. But the first of which is the stormwater piece, because I do want to revisit that. I think Andrew, calling you up. Now, I know over the years, stormwater has become more and more stringent as far as the threshold that applicant, that developers need to meet. And what I do know is that there has been significant amount of discussion around the stormwater impact related, potential impact related to this project, and that currently what exists isn't really a system to handle the stormwater on that parcel. And so what's being proposed, and this is my understanding, I'm asking, this is a setup for the question, but my understanding is that with the, with the comments and with the recommendations from stormwater, it would actually, the residents should see an improvement on the stormwater impact by that implementation. But help walk me through that determination and what that actually means.
Yes, that's right. The existing site is, I've forgotten the exact percentage, but it's, it's very impervious now. It's pretty much fully built out, with the exception of a few landscape islands and things like that on the site. It was built in the past, before our current standards, and so the current building that would be constructed, they would have to be built to our current standards, and it would provide more volume for detention, and it would provide additional volume for water quality treatment. And no doubt, when this facility was built, that wasn't a requirement at the time. And so building the facility will result in the construction of that additional volume, and that will be an improvement downstream. Now, depending upon how far downstream you are, I know some of the lake owners and HOAs downstream had particular concern about it, exactly how much difference they might be able to see. It might be difficult for them to really tell, because this site only represents a little piece of the overall watershed, and so you can make an improvement to this little piece of the puzzle, but there's a lot of pieces in the puzzle. And so, but that's how stormwater works. We're trying to just address each little piece of the puzzle as it can, and so as we build that puzzle over the course of decades, you know, we hope to bend that curve. But you're right, that over time, you know, with the improvements that they're proposing at the site, it should make an improvement downstream.
Okay, and I know one of the impacts has been the dredging costs as well, that, and we're seeing that in a lot of areas, increased dredging costs for, for lakes. Okay.
Yep.
All right. Let's see. And then there was something that, and I'll probably ask the applicant, so just kind of putting a note, but you're welcome to add anything to it, but they were sharing that most of their water flow goes to the north at this point, in terms of how it's designed, so is that consistent with?
Yeah, and I don't know if you can quite see on the GIS where it is now, but of course, the, the interstate highway is there to the right. The runoff predominantly is wanting to make its way to the north, and there's actually, yeah, that pond that you can see there at the very far northern portion of the screen, it, it has to flow to that pond first before it goes under the interstate and eventually into the Chastain Lakes Pond downstream. So that provides a good bit of protection, particularly for the Chastain Lakes Pond, because the chances of sediment, any real significant sediment, other than maybe the very finest soil particles or something like that, really are probably not going to make it out of that next pond, because they have to first go through the onsite stormwater, or pardon me, onsite erosion control, and then through the, that downstream pond before they would eventually be released to flow down to the other lake. So, so if you're, or if I were a resident in the, in the Chastain Lakes, that, that would be something that would give me at least some peace, that it's very unlikely I'm really going to have like a measurable amount of sediment going into that lake.
Okay. All right. Those are my primary questions related to stormwater. I have a ton of others that came up from the presentation as well, but want to relate to the other commissioners. Are there any questions related to stormwater? Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, DOT. So there, obviously, there was a traffic study that was done. The applicant mentioned that the traffic study did not, at that time, incorporate the shuttle, the proposed shuttle service. Just follow-up question on that, has there been a review on that shuttle service? Because it seems like it, if there are 778 beds and the capacity is 30 to 40 on that shuttle, we're running it, it's running every 10 to 20 minutes. Just curious on a review.
We have not analyzed that. We have not, we didn't have that information to consider. However, it would only improve the situation, right? Right now, all of the intersections that were studied, that were part of the study, seem to be performing at an acceptable level, even in the future, in the 2027. And by that, I do not minimize the experience of the people that live there, of course. They already are experiencing delays, as we can see in the data, and yes, that will be aggravated, if that's the word you want to use, by the, by more traffic coming in, right? But the overall performance of the analyzed, signalized and unsignalized intersections are performing at an adequate level. So the shuttle should only help with that.
Okay, and then just a follow-up question. Are there any other improvements that have been proposed, either related to the zoning or related to the current situation for this community, to help with some of the traffic concerns as well?
So, related to the particular development, they are not required to mitigate any, at any of the other intersections, but at their site, they are proposing a right-turn lane as we recommended, a left-turn lane that was already there, and improving site distance if necessary by changing the landscaping if necessary to improve site distance at their, at their driveway. And also the driveway to the south, which is adjacent to the Z52 that we mentioned earlier, that one will be entrance-only and for fire access only.
Okay. And then have there been any other recommendations, though, related to this area that have?
Not at this time.
Okay. And then there was a point brought up as well by opposition related to one-lane road that's being utilized, and I'll probably ask applicant as well, but was that looked at, if that's being utilized for the shuttle?
I don't think that that was taken into account, yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, those were the questions that I had for DOT. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the, I believe, the homeowner association president, if you could reapproach, I wanted to ask a follow-up question. And I'm sorry, I missed your name. I missed your name.
Robin.
Robin. Robert?
Robin.
Robert.
Yes.
Thank you. You had mentioned in your presentation that KSU opposes this project. Has that been formally expressed, or is that implied? Because I just want to make sure that, that's, I haven't heard that.
Okay. I do not have any formal written communication. I, they are not supporting this. I'm going to say that. That is something that we can, we can say, and Bells Ferry has, has helped get this information. So they're not in support of this. So I can't, I don't have any written records personally, I guess.
Because KSU is big, so I don't want to have you articulate something that may not, if you, yeah.
Understood.
All right. Let me see. Yeah, that was, that was the only thing I think I had in your presentation that I wanted to clarify.
Got it.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Just to wait and, and not to add here, say I did have a conversation with leadership of KSU, a number of matters, and didn't let them know about this application, and they do not wait in on private.
That was my understanding as well.
It's not that they oppose it, it's just they will not take a position.
Yeah. That was, that was my understanding as well. I just, I didn't want that to be on record by the, if that were-
I received that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Um, let's see. Okay. Applicant, if you could approach. Whoever can answer some of the questions that I've referenced were going to come up. Okay. Can you just share with me the stormwater, what you have for stormwater that you're putting, that you're proposing, and then, yeah, we'll go from there. We're kind of going in order.
Yeah. So on the stormwater situation, we'll have a below-ground storage vault, meeting current code requirements, in addition to treating the water before it leaves our site. And your supposition earlier is correct, it will drain to the north. Matter of fact, it's being designed to do so with the acceptance of both the two neighbors, the one who owns the lake itself, or the detention pond itself, as well as our neighbor directly to the north.
Okay. All right, thank you. Second question, so I did see the chart that you put up here related to the trips and estimating.
Yeah.
Can you help me understand how that calculation works?
Sure. So right now, we have, you're asking what the impact of the shuttle would be, is it just correct?
Not yet. Not the impact of the shuttle, but how the determination of one shuttle, 10 to 20 minutes, will accommodate what's being proposed, 778 potential inhabitants.
Yep. So as I think everyone here knows, who, you know, whether you've been to college or you're a family member that have been to college, classes happen throughout the day, right? You know, I can remember certain semesters where my first class on a given day might have been 9:00 AM. I have other days where it might not have been until 11:00 or 12:00, or even the afternoon. And so students, you know, trickle in and out of campus. Sometimes they even make more than one stop to and from campus. At, you know, call it, let's just say roughly 35 spaces on a bus. Our Retreat, which, the Retreat Project has a similar-sized bus, you know, that bus is at or near capacity on every run. You know, it ends up, I think, on average around 90% capacity, and it's doing it, you know, every, call it 15 minutes. And, you know, you can, if you extrapolate the math on that, even if you were to assume 50% bus occupancy, it's still a significant reduction in traffic to and from the site, regardless of how people choose to get to and from, like, they could bike, they could walk, and they could drive. Regardless, I think it, it reduces those flows. In our case, obviously, the Retreat being slightly closer to campus than our project, we would envision it having even, even greater vehicular impact, positive vehicular impact than it does at the Retreat.
If I could add, their picture showing traffic backing up. The one reality is KSU is growing and will continue to grow. Number of students going to campus will only grow. They're obviously finding different routes to get to campus, so the only way that that traffic does not keep exponentially increasing is putting people closer to campus so they have alternate ways to get there. So yes, they, they highlight a current existing traffic problem. The only way to correct that is to put students closer to campus. Any student housing that's further away, they're sitting there driving, trying to drive to campus. Our project has multiple options to get to campus without driving. That's the only way you improve that situation.
And this is partially why I am asking about maybe some other considerations around traffic as well, if looking at this area, if we know that it's going to continue to grow, what does that mean for those that live there? And then, okay. The, the route distance, can you show me how you calculate at the .7?
Harris or-
You can see there, this is the standard. You would enter Town Park Drive to the left, then you would take a right on Town Park Lane, which is a two-lane, well-developed road developed for the Regional Activity Center, you know, uses like the high-rise office building that are zoned in, in this area. So, and then it traverses that, and then you see that box, that gold box. That's actually really important. That is a combination, there's a Big Al Bus Stop there, and there's a Cobb Link Stop there. So that's on our side of the Skipspan Bridge, and then the shuttle would cross the Skipspan Bridge, pictures you've seen before, and then have the route to drop off.
Yeah, and to answer your, I think what you're asking is the driving, biking, and walking distances that we, we're in another presentation, I think we shared with everyone, those were computed on Google, like, that was Google traffic.
So wasn't like straight-line distancing?
So the actual measurement of distance, I believe, was straight-line, but the distances to transit from our, those were just, that's Google.
Okay. And then I think you brought up the, the two-lane road. I have the question about the one-lane road.
Yeah, we're not familiar with a one-lane road, but Town Park Drive is a two-lane road, one lane on each side, so. One lane on each side, so.
Okay. And then there was a question about market availability with the number of available beds, that there are a lot of, there's a lot of occupancy.
Yeah, so within the purpose-built, and nobody's in the business of losing money, obviously, in this, in this world. And so, you know, if there were indeed significant vacancy, we wouldn't be interested in developing here. What we do know is that amongst the purpose-built student housing space, occupancies are in the 99th, you know, 99%. And, you know, that's actually, if you're talking purely about multifamily or student housing, any kind of rental property, occupancies of 99% are more typically just, you know, reflect a supply and demand imbalance. That is not a healthy level of occupancy or vacancy, I should say, and is likely providing, you know, pricing pressure. And so in the coming years and months, I would expect, you know, there to be continued rent growth because of that, which isn't necessarily a good thing. And I do think our project, you know, is going to help alleviate that to a degree. You know, does our project totally solve the supply and demand imbalance? I'd be lying to you if I said yes. I mean, the problem is that the shortage is so massive that no one project would ever be able to overcome it. But we can put it in here today.
Okay.
And keep in mind, KSU on-campus housing, last list I saw had over 700. People were posting what number they were. They have over 700 on the waiting list to be on-campus. And I think your project has a waiting list of, the Retreat has a waiting list.
As well. Yeah, and the only, we did talk to the head of housing at KSU, and I think their response was, is, you know, as unfortunate as it is, as so many people are on the waiting list, unfortunately, that's never going to get better. You know, I think the people that are on it today will continue to stay on it, is, was the message we received.
Okay. And then two other areas of questioning that I have related to the safety piece. I know the safety plan is required. Can you just walk through, walk through what the different components are that you're considering?
Yes, so.
And, and how you can commit to sustaining that? Because part of what came up is a lapse of maintaining the security for some of these types of.
Yeah, and let's talk about, I'll hit your second point first, and then we'll come back to the first one. So one of the advantages of this particular type of product, unlike the Retreat. Retreat is a very spread-out, you know, and unit entry doors are everywhere. It's effectively impossible to maintain operational security of an asset that is as sprawling as that one is. Can you, you can somewhat control who comes and goes, but like, you know, there's not like a lobby. There's not, you know, security cameras, like, that everyone has to go through. But that all will exist on this project. This is an infill-style project with a single, you know, a single lobby that everyone's going to either go through the lobby directly, or alternatively, you know, in the event that they're taking a shuttle or bus or pedestrian pass, or alternatively, if they're parking their vehicle, they also have to go to the same common elevator bank. And so it's, you know, resident access is key fob-oriented. Guests have to be registered. Long-term guests are not allowed. There's a two-to-three-day, I can't remember if it's two or three days, but there's two-or-three-day period where some, you can have a guest for a weekend, but that's, that's the extent of it. So I would say that the project is designed to inherently be more secure, first and foremost. And second, as far as the kind of ongoing management of resident behavior, you know, our resident behavior plan is consistent across our entire 70,000 resident portfolio. It's incredibly important, both to Landmark, and if I'm being honest, our institutional investors who hold us to account as well, that these properties be managed in a first-rate way. Because that is how you, you maintain high occupancy levels, strong, you know, rent growth, and all of the things that investors and frankly, we care about. You know, so, you know, resident behavior is really important. I know we've talked with a number of you about how that works from a parental perspective, but we actually do work directly with parents, which helps keep behavior in line. Because ultimately, as I think we all recognize, you know, there's a transition point from being a child to being an adult, and college is really it in America today. And so we're kind of a halfway house between, you know, living with mom and dad and living on your own. And it's an appropriate step and frankly, a necessary step. Sorry.
Thank you. And then the last one, which we'll probably spend a little, I have more commentary on this one, but the density concerns as well. So where the current ask is at the 82, basically what turns into 82 units per acre?
Yeah. So, look, we've identified a multi-thousand-bed need. And even in, just, I think it was about a month ago, when enrollment figures came out at Kennesaw, it was up roughly 1,500 to 2,000 total enrollment, just this year alone. And that just further exacerbates the lack of supply that existed before this. And I think one thing we can all say for certain is that Kennesaw's not going to stop growing. It's one of the fastest-growing universities in the country, but the housing supply isn't growing. And so, you know, I think, number one, huge need for this. And I don't think reducing the bed count solves that in a way that's, I think, materially beneficial, given that need. Second, I would add that while the density overall sounds like a lot, it is consistent with the other student housing projects that are directly south of campus. There are four projects down there, and I recognize, as I've heard from some folk in the past, that those projects were completed and approved prior to the current ordinance. That's true. But I don't think that necessarily changes the fact that, you know, density of this magnitude has been, has been previously approved for this use. And so, you know, we're seeking 55 feet with no variances, and meeting, you know, the impervious surface area, which I think is really intended, you know, to restrict cumulative density. So we're achieving those things. We're doing those things. And we're not here today for, ask for any special exemptions other than, you know, the approval of the project and the byright zoning associated with it.
Okay. Those are the questions that I had for you and the clarity I wanted to get. Commissioners?
So overlapping consideration with respect to the viability of the property and the concerns around the other properties, which have, some have, should have gone into receivership. Can you speak to your consideration of those other properties and how you expect to overcome that as there are concerns from residents about how that could impact their property values?
So, I mean, if we're talking purely about property values, one thing I can say won't be good for property values is if.
No, let's go back.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just help me understand how you are going to address the viability of your project.
Oh, our, okay. So, yeah, I mean, from our perspective, this is one of the most attractive potential opportunities in our portfolio right now, in our pipeline, largely driven by the extremely large supply and demand imbalance. The Retreat Kennesaw leased up, pre-leased, actually, let's be honest. So, meaning we lease the units many months in advance of the project opening to full occupancy, meaning greater than 95% occupancy in year one. That is indicative of the supply and demand imbalance that we're seeing in this market, and have since actually grown rents at a dramatic pace, also indicative of the supply and demand imbalance in this market. This project will undoubtedly experience the same thing. I have, I have very few reservations that this is going to be an economically viable project. And if it were, we wouldn't be here. Landmark does not develop Class B locations. Like, we are a Class A student housing operator, and frankly, you know, have been the largest of our type in this space, you know, six of the last seven years. And in fact, last year alone, delivered 30% of all purpose-built housing delivered in the entire country. So like, we know what we're doing, and, you know, we're very confident that this project is going to be financially viable.
Okay, thank you. And then another overlapping consideration with respect to safety. Is there onsite security?
Yeah, so we, okay, a couple things. One, we do have site staff that lives onsite. But even setting that aside, we're also proposing two units be designated for police to live at heavily discounted or even potentially free, or at no cost to them. And it's a combination of our safety plan, which, hundreds of cameras on the property, you know, IDs required, no long-term guests, and a myriad of other things. In addition to, you know, having onsite staff, our property managers, the most senior person onsite, is literally available 24/7. They're required, as part of their job description, to be available 24/7 if something happens, and an onsite police presence.
Okay. Those are all the questions that I have. Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of questions, just to dig in a little deeper on security. You mentioned earlier that there will be fobs for the building. When we met last week, you shared a presentation that some of the rooms may have upwards of like five to six spaces.
Yep.
So can you talk to me a little bit about the security within those spaces?
Absolutely. So the way it works, let's say it's a five-bedroom unit. So you'll have five residents who will have a key fob that will get them in the front door of their unit. Once in the unit, each individual resident, same key fob, will access their bedroom door, but not each other's bedroom doors. And the bathrooms throughout the property are largely private, so both bathroom and bedroom are individually accessed by each individual resident within that unit. But not all residents within that unit will have individual access. So like, they only have their room. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. But just for clarification, each bedroom will have its own bathroom, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. And also the amenity area.
Yep.
Can you talk to us a little bit about securing that space?
Yeah, so two things that happen in the amenity areas. One, resident key fob, same thing, key fob access, but it is time-restricted as well. So amenities, for example, like the outdoor pool, even though it is fully surrounded by building structures, so there won't be any kind of noise or light issues, even aside from that, we shut that down roughly at 10:00 a.m., or 10:00 p.m., excuse me. And then it remains locked overnight. So those key fobs that work prior to 10:00 p.m. stop working after 10:00 p.m. Additionally, there's cameras throughout that space. And so if people are hanging out past the 10:00 p.m. cutoff, you know, someone goes up there and they kind of escort them out and lock the doors.
Okay. And regarding the shuttle, I think it was mentioned that the shuttle would run every 10 to 20 minutes.
That's right.
Was that an accurate statement? Okay.
Yes.
And what are the hours of the shuttle?
Yeah, so that typically runs from, you know, it's university-specific. And so it typically runs with the class schedule. So, you know, in this case, hypothetically, and I don't know this off the top of my head, but let's say it would run from 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And then sometimes even has evening and weekend hours that are even very route. You know, and a lot of our properties will have a shuttle stop at like the grocery store on a Saturday or something along those lines to provide additional, you know, transit options.
Okay. And will the transportation bus run between your two properties, or will each?
No, so because we already have a shuttle at the Retreat, there's no need for a duplicative service. The way we, this will be a totally separate shuttle, and at great expense, I mean, this, you know, just full disclosure, you know, it's roughly 150,000-plus, a little bit, per year to operate this shuttle that we invest as part of the property budget. And I can, I can tell you that we're doing that because we do think it is a benefit both to the residents and the community at large. So it's a non-material amount, or it's a material amount, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And one question I did, it was on my other list, but not on the presentation list.
Yeah.
The rooftop activation.
Yeah.
What considerations have been made around noise and light?
Yeah, so that kind of goes back to my prior point, that we built effectively a sunken rooftop amenity, meaning that there's, you can see it here. There's actually building structures surrounding the entire thing. So from our perspective, that will mitigate almost entirely all light and noise coming from this. In addition to that, to the, directly to the east, there's obviously a massive highway. And so whatever noise that this, that could potentially be generated by this, which does exist on the backside of the property, will be mitigated both by the well that we've created and by the neighboring hum of traffic.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for getting up. Okay, there's a follow-up question.
Yeah.
And Chair, go ahead, and Campbell.
Just a follow-up question to what you were answering in regards to security. I know you're offering two bedrooms to police officers, but how many rooms are you looking to lease to non-students?
So, and I know we've talked about this in prior meetings, I think even in front of the Planning Commission. We're unable to restrict who lives at our properties. Meaning to say HUD standards do not allow for us to discriminate based on status. And like, oh, you know, you're a student, so you, only students can live here. We can't do that. But what I can tell you, practically speaking, in our 70,000 resident portfolio, it's a very rare thing for non-students to live at our assets, especially those assets not in downtown major metro cores. So, for example, if this was midtown next to Georgia Tech, would we have non-students living there? Potentially. And usually, it's just so you understand, kind of order of magnitude, you'd be talking about 5% of residents might be non-students. Usually, they're people who've just graduated, and they're still kind of living with their friends before kind of moving off and getting their own place. At this particular asset, I would envision that being 1% or less. And I, you know, we could probably confirm at the Retreat, but I would assume it's the same there.
My concern with this line of questioning goes back to the Z-52 application of 2022, where we put restrictions on that complex as to who they could rent to. And so, you know, and it was approved, I mean, the board approved that, and they are following that rule. So my, my kind of question is, or legal challenges? You know, if we can put that restriction on that application, why can't we put some type of restriction here? Because listening to the rest of the presentations, you know, we're hearing there's a need, yet supposedly, we've got 2,977 apartments available, or I'm going to say beds, available today. So why are they empty? Which I don't expect you to answer, but that's coming to my mind, is why are they empty when we're hearing there's a need? Yet, we're not going to be restricting this specifically to students.
I can answer it if you want, but it's up to you, Kelly.
It's more of a challenge to the board here.
Okay.
Again, knowing the restrictions we've put on other developments.
Yes, I, I appreciate that communication. And I was cautiously listening to the conversation around that, knowing that HUD does have restrictions on how people are limited in living in certain places. But what I can share with you, and this made me concerned when I heard the nearby property owner speak, is he said that he negotiated with the community. And we do know that oftentimes, to move a development or a zoning application forward, that conditions will sometimes be applied to gain the favor of the commissioner, the board, the community. So I just want to be very clear that this is not, this wasn't heavy-handed, one-sided condition placed upon us by commissioners, which we would not do, nor legally should ever consider doing, particularly when it can be in violation of HUD. With that being said, I do hear the gentleman's concerns about him moving forward with that negotiation to provide a restriction about cosigning, for lack of a better term, which again, isn't necessarily directly calling out a student population and saying, we restrict students. But not only is it implied, but it was articulated in his remarks that it was meant to deter students. And I have an issue with that. Because again, that gets to us limiting a population in a way that we shouldn't. And in fact, even though it wasn't articulated by the gentleman who spoke on behalf of the residents, I'm hearing very strong inferences about a population not being desired. And again, that wasn't, that wasn't articulated, it was just strongly inferred. However, it was specifically articulated when the nearby property owner spoke to the, spoke to the consideration of stipulations. This goes beyond answering your question, but it does get to just the nuance of this area that someone stated, and it may have been the applicant. But KSU is growing tremendously. And I think over the years, we've been trying to deal with the growth of the university and the expectations of those that are looking for more traditional, single-family experiences in what is essentially becoming a college community, perhaps almost a college town. I do know that. I do know that my children are entering in those years where they're considering colleges, and I have heard from other parents whose children are being accepted into Kennesaw State University, and how difficult it is for their students to become housed there, and their consideration of buying property in Cobb County as close to the school as possible so their children can be educated at KSU. I'm hearing this just from networks of people that I know. We hear this a lot when we have land use permit considerations before this board. We are just in a very, we are in a transitional time, which is causing a lot of conflict in light of what, on its face, if you don't live in the community, would be considered something very positive to have a university that's growing and educating more people here within our community. But, you know, living there, you're going to have to deal with the nuances of that. We heard about traffic, we heard about some of the other concerns here today, and, you know, I appreciate the student housing code that was updated, and that's one thing to look at it from a code perspective. And now we're dealing with the reality of how it really impacts the people that live in that community. All that being said, just getting back to your point, Commissioner, I appreciate your observation. I have concerns as I'm hearing the discussion. I would not be in favor of applying a restriction for a student population. I wouldn't be in favor of applying any restriction that's in violation of HUD to restrict people who are non-students. We do know similar as to how that other property had conditions to market itself towards people who are not students. I believe that there probably would not be a lot of people outside of students that would want to live in a six-pod residential. That's just me, per se, but you never know. People choose a lot of different ways to live. There are homes that are being subdivided in many ways in different communities, so that's, I guess, different ways that people live. But I would not be in support, and I think we would be treading in dangerous territory to have any population restriction. I know Commissioner Sheffield, Commissioner Richardson, I don't know if you want to respond or Campbell respond before?
It's a piggyback to, it's a piggyback to the restriction, and, you know, as far as I know, HUD does not have a protected class of quote-unquote "students." You know, when I see this type of development that's specifically for students to fill a need, I think to our senior communities, our adult living communities where there are age restrictions there. So, you know, legally, I'm not sure, you know, how this would parallel to that, but I just don't see where this type of restriction for students only would be different from the age restriction.
Yeah, let me address that a couple of different ways. The age restriction is built into the HUD standards, so you can specifically age restrict, and that'll, that actually is kind of a way around not having to be able to restrict families, because that's the family is what protected. And so the, there is a specific senior exemption that allows that restriction that complies with HUD requirements. I think the answer that the county did in 2019, they did a study recognizing student housing was needed, and that's when the purpose-built student housing ordinance was adopted, and that's how we operate, and that was the county's response to handling the issue of can you restrict certain uses? It allows developments that are purposely built for students. That leads to filling that need that is actually there, and that's what the county adopted in 2020, I think was when it was adopted. The study was done in 2019, and recognized not only that you needed a purpose-built student housing ordinance, but specifically called for properties close to campus north of Chastain Road to be where you want students to be located at. So those were brought up, and all I want to emphasize, we are fully in compliance with the limitations that the county has in the purpose-built student housing code.
I would also like to add something. So, I think that this is a rapidly evolving portion of the law with respect to who, what, and how can be restricted. You know, if there's other countries like Canada, for example, who have deemed it illegal to define what a family is or isn't, you know, that could be coming down the pike. But the bottom line is, if Landmark were able to restrict this only to students, we probably would. The reason that we don't is because the legal guidance we've received at a national level is that that is a, both ethically, morally, and potentially legally perilous policy, and that is why we don't have it. Now, that also applies in reverse, meaning if you were to try to exclude students, we would feel similarly. You know, I think it's a question of when that law becomes an issue, you know, becomes a real thing, when the Supreme Court ultimately rules on it, and that's impossible to predict.
Okay. But kind of to piggyback off of this conversation, we heard the Cobb County Comprehensive Plan be brought up, but we haven't had the conversation of what does the Town Center CID Comprehensive Plan look like? And maybe you're going to get to that. But my concern is, again, we put this code to build student housing. It wasn't necessarily thought that we're going to start converting all of our office space to purpose-built student housing, and I think that's the bigger concern here, looking at the whole purpose and intent of the Town Center CID area. My concern is we know the banks are only financing apartments and purpose-built student housing right now, so that is going to automatically put our office into jeopardy. But where are we going to put our future businesses? Cobb County is out of land. We don't have places for new industries to come to. So if we continue to convert our offices to housing, where are we going to put the businesses that are going to support the people that have been educated with a job? Because it won't be here. So I think that's a bigger picture that we're overlooking here, and I wasn't going to hit on this now, but to kind of back up why I'm making these statements. UGA has 9,000 beds. KSU currently has 6,000 on campus. Yet we heard in testimony that there are 7,120 beds off-campus. We know that KSU's population is larger than UGA's. Yet, and I think if I'm correct, UGA has a requirement that students have to live on campus their first year, hence the 9,000 beds. KSU does not have that requirement. I also found it interesting marketing where you were saying that 71% of the students were shadow living, yet according to KSU, 80% of their students commute, because after all, they are a commuter college. So I found that marketing twisting of words interesting. But it goes back to the bigger picture of KSU does not have housing requirements to be on campus. If KSU wants housing, they have ability to build it on campus. Going again to other colleges and their beds, we far exceed the need, looking at other campuses that are currently built, not even looking at what's built. I also think we need to look at, it was Z-43, which had originally been on consent, and I too have had conversations with KSU, and I understand why that one was pulled from the consent agenda item. But also, that one's being done at 26.4 units per acre, not 80, or beds, I'm sorry, beds, not 82. I think that is a big factor, but again, yes, KSU is growing, but how is that going to affect the Town Center CID and the purpose it fulfills for the county for our future?
Okay. No, all great questions, and I think part of-
Commissioner Pearl?
Yes, Commissioner.
I was waiting for a motion and a second for discussion, but I guess I'll weigh in now.
We're already in discussion.
We're already passed up, right?
We're not, we're not there yet, we're still, we're still kind of referencing questions related to town.
Right. And as you know, the, back in 2019, when we established a task force for purpose-built student housing with all the players involved, and adopted it, all of KSU and all of Town Center CID was in District 3. Up until a few weeks ago, you know, this particular project was in District 3. So I've been involved from the beginning, but I will say that Landmark was the first, the retreat was the first student housing that came to us once the ordinance was adopted. They had no variances, they were a good quality and good company, and there's no concern about that. They are further downtown park. They're not across from homeowners and the townhome complex across the street. To me, this area, this, this project, the number of beds per unit with the 80, 82 or 83, and the intensity and density at this end of Town Park is too intense. This project, I'm not concerned about the quality, because I've seen what you've done at the retreat, and I haven't had any complaints on noise or anything, but where that is, is more commercial Kaiser Permanente and apartments up Busby, and you're right at Busby. You're not having to go through Town Park to get out on a one-lane, two-lane road. So I just think this is too intense for this location. And back to the restriction on who can live there, we've had lawsuits on the Fair Housing Act because of, even with group homes, not just housing, student housing or apartments. So you can't restrict it to students only.
Okay. So thank you for commentary and certainly the questions. Let me see, where we gather. So there were a couple of things that were mentioned that I do want to just cover off and then general comment, because I understand that Town Center Tracy, Tracy is here as well, so we can ask some questions related to the, to the plan and the need, and kind of restrict it to that scope, because, but basically what I, what I am gathering, my general comment on this has been, we're seeing what it means when we don't have a full overall strategic plan for an area that's rapidly growing, and certainly the residents are feeling that impact. And so what we are attempting to accomplish in this zoning is something that is akin to a paced growth, which is always going to be complex without having an overall plan. So I do want to, I think that's the imperative for our board as a board to look at what an overall plan for this looks like, and I think everyone's been open to moving forward in that space, but that can't be a predeterminant for this case that's before us. And then the only other general comment that I'll make is related to the restriction, while that has come up, and I can appreciate the position that you're in, that was something that was negotiated between your zoning case and the community, and so we can't pre-apply, even if it's founded or there was rationale for it, you can't pre-apply that restriction. But- It's not, it's not, it's not, it's general.
We'll have to call you.
We were asking, yeah. It's not a clarification, per se, it's just general comment that as a standard procedure, we can't just copy that over unless there's sufficient rationale, which is what we're, why we're trying to debate and understand this case further. Go ahead.
But we did approve it with that stipulation in there.
Understood.
And that will set a precedent for more student housing, the same thing.
It's precedent always, it works the opposite way, though, not, I understand, but that was something, there are property owners, parcel owners, that negotiate more stringent requirements on their parcel all the time. It doesn't pre-meditate what happens for future applicants. Now, if they do something less restrictive, and we approve something less restrictive, then yes, we do have to definitely consider that because it's discriminatory to not. But that's just, I would just want to separate those issues out a little bit. It is something that's been looked at, but I just want to be clear on what, what we're looking at and trying to piece through right now. So I do want to take the liberty to have Tracy Stife come up here and just address the two components that are brought up, and certainly any questions that other members- Yes, you do need to be sworn in. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
How can I be of service?
So certainly as a, please state your name.
Tracy Stife, Executive Director, Town Center Community Improvement District.
Thank you. Certainly as a stakeholder for this community and observant of the trends and what's happening, can you just speak a little bit to the need? There's been a decent, a significant amount of debate on the need for student housing.
Right.
And some of the changing trends that have been occurring over time. So can you add some color to that or speak to that?
Absolutely. I also want to note that I am a current trustee of the KSU Board of Trustees, so that, just to make everyone aware of that as well, and KSU did not formally take a position on this, is KSU is not able to take a side for or against, neither are CIDs, so I want to provide clarity around that as well. We are here to provide education related to plans and studies that have been done in relation to the Town Center CID, and specifically, things related to the commercial district. For a little bit of information, CIDs are taxing commercial properties, not residential properties, multifamily, and purpose-built student housing. And so while this shows numbers for an improvement of an overall tax base increase, it does take away CID tax. It would transition from a commercial property to a purpose-built student housing property, which would then take that CID tax off the rolls. However, because it is contiguous with other commercial properties, we would still be providing services to that property owner. And so that is something that's a concern for the CID, is we have limited resources just like everyone else, but continue to do that through our work and best practices for Town Center. In terms of plans, we have a lot of master plans. We, as a 28-year-old CID, the second oldest in the state of Georgia, we have been looking at master planning for this district for a very long time. Our latest master plan was in 2017, and we just completed a strategic planning process ourself. We recently received funding from the Atlanta Regional Commission for the tenure update to our LCI, which is Livable Centers Initiative, funding for a tenure plan update for the CID area. Looking at that is very mixed use in terms of residents, commercial, visitors, KSU, students, and all of the different types of programming and product that come to the district. So that RFP is currently out for consideration and will be brought back to the CID mid-October. We're in the process of working with KSU as well as community development and DOT, looking collaboratively at all of our plans, because there's a lot of good data there from a lot of smart staff, experts who know about what infrastructure needs are in the area. And so we're in the midst of putting our arms around all of those plans in order to look at plans for the future. The growth of KSU has been dramatic and rapid, and the infrastructure inside of Town Center that includes residents as well needs to meet the needs of both the commercial and the residential community.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for adding a lot more color and context to it.
Absolutely.
Other questions for Tracy?
Anything else? Anything else?
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Absolutely. So all of that, and I will just share, you know, generally speaking, when it comes to zoning cases that come to us, we look for things that are consistent with future land use. We look for things that have no variances. We look for things that actually support a need and, and try to look at how that's defined. And we look for zonings that try to incorporate our strategic goals as well. And certainly love when applicants work closely with members of the community to understand how to provide safeguards, how to improve what it is they're proposing, and also stakeholders. And in this case, we have a lot of stakeholders that are within this area. That being said, I think where this zoning is, there's still some outstanding things that I would like to see as a part of some additional conversation, specifically five different things that I have on the list. And so my, my recommendation on this is going to be to hold this until the next zoning hearing with these requirements to come back as a part of that presentation. So should I go ahead and read through those and then make a motion? Okay. Motion to, is it continue or hold? Because we...
You would hold it.
Because we heard it. Yeah, okay. Motion to hold until the next zoning hearing on October 15th with the goal to determine an appropriate density, and I'll share a little bit more about why I'm adding that to that, to revisit and look at the shuttle aspect to this proposal and have a full transportation plan proposal that incorporates some additional information on that and on any of the other traffic concerns that we may have. To have a meeting, one meeting, at least one meeting with members of the community along with the relevant stakeholders. This includes KSU and CID to fully understand their perspective and make sure that those aspects are incorporated into this plan. Number four is a rooftop activation proposal. I think that while there have been considerable, I appreciated that part of the presentation, considerable aspects in how that can be brought in, I think maybe even more phased or just looking at it in totality, I would like to see a rooftop activation proposal. And then to make sure from a property value perspective that we're incorporating any design aspects that can protect the property value of, of nearby, about nearby office spaces and nearby townhomes. And so those are the five aspects with the first one I listed being a priority. And that is based upon the fact that, I'll actually ask you in the motion and then I'll add a little bit to why I've added that first one.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Oh, that's your motion.
Okay. Thank you. So... So for the first aspect in there, I want us to take a look at the density because for purpose, for student purpose-built housing, it's a little bit unique in how it's structured and what density looks like interact. I want to make sure that we are being consistent with other areas as well that have similar types of land use designations. And I think we can get there. It's just a, a further conversation on that piece. And so that's why that was included along with the others. Any other comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner. I read four, or I wrote down four. Have rooftop activation, transportation, density, communication with KSU, and property owners.
So I had appropriate density, transportation plan, meeting with the community and the relevant stakeholders, rooftop activation, and then to make sure that we're incorporating any design elements.
Oh, to protect the...
To protect property value for the office spaces and for the nearby townhomes. And this is for Z25 and Slap Six. Thank you. I guess, can I amend the mo, can I just amend the motion or add...
Just separate motions. You can repeat this next motion for Slap Six.
Okay. So that, that is my motion for Z25 is to hold. Got the second? We're still in discussion.
Yes, we're still in discussion. Are there any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Just some clarification may need to be provided. I saw the rooftop plan, so I don't know, we need to provide what the activation versus the plan is.
Yeah, so the, the design of the rooftop, I think that's, I think that, I guess I was very pleased with that part of the presentation. As far as the activation plan is, what exactly are we doing in the rooftop and making sure that that's clear? And it's similar, I have other parcels that kind of have a similar activation plan, and it's really to take a phased approach. And I'm trying to take these precautions because I know that this growth is rapid. And so I want to look at how we can phase different components in. But the rooftop activation with noise and light, I think we have an opportunity there to just make sure that's clear for everybody when we do come back.
Okay. And just for clarification too, which may be helpful, because Commissioner Burrell has some experience with the developer, but she did speak to the quality of their other development, and that wasn't a concern, so maybe substantiating that in some way that...
For what? The design of it?
Could be design.
It's more of...
I'm presuming you're looking for design features.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more of just making sure it's consistent with everything that's around the area. It can be a great product standalone, is it a great product in the community?
Okay.
And that's what I just want to do a comparison on.
Okay. Yeah. I don't have questions regarding the others.
Okay.
All right. There's no further discussion, we'll call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, please, let's take a...
Wait, I have to do Slap Six.
I forgot.
Sorry. Slap Six.
Yes, thank you, there are companies. Thank you.
Motion to hold Slap Six as well to the October 15th hearing with the five requirements of determining appropriate density, transportation proposal that includes the shuttle from, along with DOT conversations, a meeting with community and relevant stakeholders, rooftop activation proposal, and to ensure that there are design elements incorporated to fit within the community.
All right. Second. Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thanks, Commissioners. Let's come back at 11:05, please.
Good morning and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners meeting, the September 17th, 2024. We are now at our next zoning case and John will please help us as we move forward in our agenda.
Sure, our next case is LEP 28, Eddie Alvarez, requesting a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles and adults than the code allows in Land Lot 773 and 782 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Whipporoyl Drive, west of Castle Way. Is the applicant present? Director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 28? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
You may begin when you're ready. Thank you.
We were just before the zoning board on the ninth.
Hey, can you state your name for the record, please, for both of you?
I'm sorry, Steve Carruth.
And Eddie.
Eddie Alvarez.
Thank you.
We were before the board or the zoning board on the ninth and we have, the house has a finished basement in it that has been completed. There's six adults living in the house, five of them are family members, one is the fiance of the son. We discussed that there, one of the vehicles in that driveway was my company's vehicle. They, I use it to let them park at home at night so I can dispatch them from the house and had made a recommendation for me to bring that vehicle back to the office if that helps. That only puts five vehicles in the driveway. We did pour additional concrete last year to make a semicircle driveway so there's no vehicles that aren't parked in concrete or in the carport. I think that's everything.
Okay, thank you. That concludes your presentation. We'll now hear from opposition.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll let the Commissioner deliberate. Okay, there's no opposition?
If I can have the applicant and Mr. Carruth, I think it is, to come back, please?
All right, well, come on back.
That's okay. Just for clarification, who is the applicant for this?
My.
Okay, Mr. Alvarez. And Mr. Carruth, the role that you're playing in this application is what, please?
Just to help him and his brother works for my company.
Okay, because I didn't hear from the applicant, so I just want to make sure that the applicant has a full understanding of what's being said and, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you. While you're standing there, I did have an opportunity to watch the PC hearing and although there is no opposition here with us today, there were several people in opposition at the hearing. And some of the concerns that were shared at the PC meeting included vehicles that were parked all over the residence is what the person in opposition shared, including on the grass and that there was loud music regularly played from the home. And I'll just ask Mr. Alvarez, what have you done from that point from the PC meeting to now to address those concerns?
Well, the cars parked on the grass would be just like when we have parties, that's it.
Okay.
Like you said, we just poured concrete maybe like last year. So we have all both ways, you know, to get in and get out.
Okay, but I just wanted, you know, to communicate that even with having parties parking on the grass is not allowed and I just wanted to make that clear. And also, both, both residents in opposition made reference to the music. I don't know if police or anyone has been called out, but I just want to make sure that you're addressing that as well.
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right.
And I did speak with both the two people that were in opposition and gave them my phone number and said if they're, these guys work for me, if there's ever an issue to call me and made them, you know, let them know that I would be happy to help with any of that. We've obviously had talks after the last meeting that they won't be having parties late at night. And there was some cleaning up that needed to be done at the house and that's been taken care of as well.
Okay, I just have a question. Are you the owner of the house? Because there seems to be.
He is, he is with his father.
Okay, he's the owner, but I'm just a little confused or curious as to why they're calling you to keep down music at that property. Like, how were you involved other than him being your employer and having a vehicle parked at that property?
That's it. It was just an accommodation to them to let them know if they needed extra assistance, they can call me and I can, you know, make sure that it doesn't happen. It was just to, you know, just to be helpful.
Okay, and do they have the contact information for the applicant?
They did.
They have his contact information, okay.
Did you have something?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I'm also confused because you gave testimony that there's five family members plus a fiance living there. So now I'm very concerned. Do you live at this residence?
No, he doesn't. So the work vehicle, which I believe, the work vehicle, has the work vehicle been removed? That was one of the conditions from the PC meeting.
It is. It's being parked at the warehouse now at our office.
It's being parked where, sir?
At our office in the warehouse.
Okay, all right. So that leaves how many vehicles now at the property?
A total of five.
So the commercial vehicle made number six, car number six?
Correct.
Okay. Also, there was testimony at the PC hearing that there is a shed on the property. Can you confirm if there is a shed on your property?
Yes, in the back.
Okay.
It's been there when, it's been there when we bought it.
Oh, okay, okay. And there was also testimony that people are residing at the shed? Can you confirm that?
No, nobody lives there.
Okay, I would like to hear from the applicant. I appreciate you being there to help, but I really, this is his application and I need to hear from him directly. Thank you. So it is not being used as a shelter?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Just for storage.
For storage, okay. So at the property, do you have a garage at the property?
Yeah, carport.
You have a carport, okay.
It's attached to the house?
Sir, sir, I need to hear. As a matter of fact, let me just have the-
Commissioner Sheffield, if you don't mind, let me get some clarification from the county attorney. In the, in the land use permit application lists the gentleman residing there, it doesn't list the gentleman who I believe you employ, this other gentleman? I don't know if it was appropriate for him to even have presented the matter or to be up there responding to.
You're allowed other people to be able to present the matter. It doesn't have to be an attorney to be able to do that, but if the, if the inquiries are directly to the applicant, then the applicant should be the one answering the questions.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Initially, I assumed there were, initially I thought there might have been a language issue, but it doesn't appear to be a language issue at all. And so-
Correct.
At this point in time, just talk, speak with the applicant and ask him to step down if he wants to.
Sir, I would just ask that, yes, be mindful. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner. Thanks. Okay, so you have a carport. Are you currently parking vehicles in the carport?
Yes, ma'am.
You are, okay. And how many are you parking in the carport?
Two.
Two. So how many are you parking, how many are you parking in the driveway?
Three.
And three in the driveway?
Yes, ma'am.
And are those cars, when they're on the property, are they always parked in those locations? Are you parking any vehicles on the street or any vehicles on the grass?
Not in the driveway.
Pardon?
In the driveway.
Okay. Are you parking on the grass?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Are you parking on the street?
No, ma'am.
And it's not that it's not allowed, I just wanted to know. Okay. Okay, that's all I have for him. Do you guys have any questions? Otherwise, I'll have you Lisa. Yeah, go ahead.
Sir, can you tell me which was the original driveway? Because in the testimony we received from the other gentleman, he said that you had created a circular driveway. So which, which was the original driveway for your property? Was it off of Whipporoyl or?
Yeah, Whipporoyl.
Off of Whipporoyl. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I have. That, you may be seated, thank you. Yulisa, if you wouldn't mind approaching?
Good morning. Yulisa Foster, Cobb County Code Enforcement.
Thank you. Yulisa, are there any current pending cases for this property and/or any outstanding code violations?
The only violation we have right now is this case that's pending due to them having too many vehicles at the property. And also, let's see, they had too many vehicles at the property.
And what are you counting as too many? We have five here in the record, but I'm not sure if you observed a different number?
When we first started, they had, they're allowed to have five vehicles, but out of the five vehicles, only four could be parked outside of the garage or carport. And then also, they have six adults, which they're only allowed to have five adults.
Okay.
And that's listed on their notarized statement of occupancy they provided to the office.
Okay. Any other code violations?
No, ma'am.
Pending cases?
No.
Okay, all right, just wanted to confirm. Actually, I do, thank you.
Do you guys have a question for Yulisa, Code Enforcement?
Do. If they have a total of five now, with the work truck gone.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
If they have a total of five now, two in the carport and three outside, they're in compliance.
Correct. Thank you. For the vehicles. Right, but not for the living adult. Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, if you wouldn't mind, I do have a question regarding the additional adult. Thank you. There are six adults at the property. Are there any children at the property?
Yeah, my, my brother, my sister.
Okay, and they're, they're minors?
Yeah.
Your siblings?
Yeah, they're in high school.
Okay. And the code allows for five adults, but your application has six. What can you tell us about the additional adult?
Oh, my sister-in-law.
Your sister-in-law?
Yeah, she just moved in.
Okay, because with the PC, at the PC hearing, it was communicated that that was a fiance?
Yeah, fiance.
Is that, okay, so, okay, all right. And, what? No, 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 no. It was shared earlier that there is a basement at the property?
Yes, ma'am.
And did you mention that that was a finished basement or unfinished basement?
Yeah, two bedrooms and a living room.
Okay. John, this property is 2,100 square feet and typically we don't consider basement square footage. Is that considered for this application?
We do consider basement square footage if it's finished.
Okay, okay, all right. I just know in real estate sometimes if it's below grade, it's not counted as true square footage, so I just wanted to verify that with you. Okay, all right. Do you guys have any questions, any additional questions from Mr. Alvarez? Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a lump, but staffed it way in, staff recommended approval, John? Is that, I believe the application was for 24 months?
The staff recommendation was for denial. I believe the planning commission recommended approval of the application-
Right.
Since they did get rid of one of the cars. Now, now they're in compliance with the car and then the one extra adult is the fiance to one of the children in the house.
Right, right. And the PC recommended approval for 12 months?
Yes.
I know that we're in the process of amending our, our code as it relates to unrelated adults. I'm glad to see that the property did come in compliance with that additional work vehicle. So you're now within code with the five vehicles, but obviously outside of code with the additional adult, which, you know, is a sister-in-law and considered a family member. So I will support staff's, I'm sorry, the PC recommendation for approval for 12 months. There were some conditions added to, to the PC recommendation. Let me just flip through that. But as I look through that, I also want to add a stipulation that two vehicles are to be parked in the driveway when they're on the property. I know currently your testimony is such that it is, but I just want to go on the record to confirm that it should be moving forward to N, the carport if it's on the property, and three N, on the driveway. And I believe with PC comments, it was recommended that, that code enforcement visits the property, John?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's once a quarter.
Pardon?
And that visitation is once per quarter.
Once per quarter, okay, okay. Those are all of the conditions that I have to include all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Okay, was that stated in the form of a motion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Right, is there any additional discussion, Commissioner Gamble? Okay, sure.
If we can, that's fine.
Okay, Ligia, this question is going to be for you. CP, can you put that picture, that picture back up? So my question, the original driveway was on Whipporoyl. Castle was where they put in the new driveway. Did they have a permit when they put in their driveway?
I do not have records of a permit at that address.
Okay. My next question, and Ligia, I don't know if you can answer this, or John, if you can. Their property line is yellow and then it goes to the orange. Who owns that property or is that supposed to be a conservation area? Why, why the difference?
To answer your question, Commissioner Gamble, I'm not sure why there's a gap in there, because normally your property line would go to Castle Way right away. So I'm not sure if it's just narrow with GIS or if that's really where the property line is.
Okay, because my only concern is if they constructed a driveway through an area that they should not have. And given the fact that they had a permit, we didn't have the chance to review it prior to them building it. And I know in staff comments, it's, you know, they have to address the driveway, but it's kind of written to the effect that should any driveway modifications or redevelopment of the property occur. So there's not going to be anything to trigger that potentially being addressed with this motion.
Thank you for that observation. John, I'm not sure if there is a way that we can confirm why the property line is not, I guess, closer to Castle Way. Where are you finding that?
Or my other concern, Commissioner Sheffield, if that was supposed to be a conservation area, green, you know, green space, because I have the GIS pulled up and it is shown on the GIS as a separate property. But now going to the owner, it says that it's owned by Lobos Rafael Antonio, which is not on this application. And just for clarification, oh, but this is odd, because it also says 1586 Whipporoyl, which is the address for the parcel.
I'm looking at tax records, Commissioner Gamble. That person who owns the little strip sold him the property with the house. So I'm not sure if there's a problem with how the deeds were recorded, but, but Lobos sold the applicant 1586. So I'm not sure why there's two different properties right there.
So that is a part of the subject parcel?
And it, and it looks like, just Commissioner Sheffield, that happened in 2018?
2018.
That is a part of the subject parcel then, is what you're saying, John?
Yeah, so it just hasn't been reconciled.
I'm trying to read their, their legal description right now to see if it's part of it.
Okay, all right, fantastic. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So it appears, well, I'm not sure why it's not updated in the system, but the tax records reflect that it is the same owner. But I do appreciate your observation on that. That was a really good catch.
Just a follow-up question. Collected, it's the same owner, it is the same address, right? So I want to make sure the application follows the, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, that's what John communicated. Okay.
I guess, is there any further discussion?
Yeah, the call to vote.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries five zero. So the request has been approved.
Okay, last item on today's agenda is other business item number 54 of 2024, which is to consider amending the site plan stipulations regarding the 20-foot undisturbed buffer for Michael, for Robert Michael Shepherd regarding rezoning application Z145 of 1993. The property is located on the north side of Branford Way, west of Bellis Frey Road in Land Lot 213 of the 16th District. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business number 54? The director says no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning. You can begin whenever you're ready, just don't forget to state your name.
Okay, thank you. My name is Michael Shepherd. I live at 328, so one of the properties there. And I'm also speaking on behalf of the other people in the neighborhood, the other properties. And go to the next slide here. All right, so I just want to go through a, you know, I had a little agenda here, just start with the purpose. So as you discussed, the purpose is to change the undisturbed buffer at this location to a landscape buffer. The buffer zone that we're applying to change exists on our property, so it's something that we do own. And you can see here on the land plat, the, it's kind of hard to see, I apologize. The 20-foot undisturbed buffer is actually shown just below Lot 93, which is an Arden Chase, the neighborhood behind us. The, and this is a little markup, we would, if we need to modify the land plat, we would do that officially. But the properties are shown there with a red cloud and we would change it from undisturbed to landscape buffer. And there's a note there. buffer. And there's a note there. Just a little bit for the purpose of a landscape buffer, we discussed with the, with Cobb County Landscape Architect and Commissioner Burrell, just how we would try to achieve this buffer zone without, while being able to maintain our fences. So the main concern with it, and I'll show some pictures shortly, is that this is a privacy screen between us and Arden Chase behind us. And I'll get into history in a little bit here. The landscape buffer allows us to plant the privacy screen back while maintaining a, our fences that are located on our lots. So I'll show a photo here shortly. And I got ahead of myself. Undisturbed buffer will have evergreen plantings and no structures allowed, but a landscape buffer would be the same evergreen plantings, but fences would be allowed on the buffer. Okay, so for some background, this undisturbed buffer was originally defined in a zoning application from 1993, which is when the neighborhood was first built. It was an agreement between Arden Chase behind our neighborhood and then our neighborhood. So it's defined, the developer agrees to landscape between the property and Arden Chase with Virginia pines or comparable evergreen plantings along the northwesterly property lines. The trees will be planted at 10 feet on center, five feet tall. And it was created during construction of the Park at Bell's Ferry due to concerns by Arden Chase HOA. It's a privacy buffer and not a stream buffer. So specifically, this is for privacy. There is a stream buffer that's located on the west side of the neighborhood, but that's not our buffer. This is specifically for privacy between us and Arden Chase, since our neighborhoods butt up against each other. So currently, the fences, so currently, this buffer doesn't exist in some locations. We've lived there for a very long time. I've only lived there four years, but my neighbor next to me has lived there 18 years. We have fences that run perpendicular to the lots that have been in place for as far back as I can tell on Google Earth where the resolution can actually see it. And then my neighbors who have lived there 18 and 16 years have confirmed these, they've always had these fences. For the vegetation and trees, those have mostly not been there, but there are people that have cut down trees and they weren't supposed to. So essentially, what we're asking to do is replant the vegetation, the trees that were cut down and where they should be, but keep the fence, our privacy fences that just separate our lots. So it's on our lot and we own it. We just want to be able to separate our lots. So I have some photos here. So this is 324, and the fence in question here is, it's not the back fence, it's on the left there. So it's not between us and Arden Chase, it's between 324 and 326. And if this were denied, we would have to remove 20 feet of that fence. And I've talked with our HOA president and some other people, and I, you know, it doesn't really make sense just to remove that 20 feet of fence. So we're just trying to keep that fence on the left and right side. This is my lot. I have a drainage easement on the left, which you can kind of see with the bushes that line it. The fence in question would be on the right side of this photo, so it's the back 20 feet. There's a little bird feeder there, that's 20 feet from the fence on the back. So essentially, we'd have to remove up to that bird feeder fencing if it were not approved. So essentially, if it's not approved, we're required to remove fences that have been on our lot since we purchased our homes. That would essentially mean that we lose 1,000 square feet of our property. We're not able to fence it off, not able to control it. And, you know, if we did do that, it's undisturbed, you know, there's concerns as far as not being able to maintain it. We pay property taxes on this area. We would like to keep it fenced off. The fences do not impact Arden Chase, they're not really visible to them, they're not, they've been there since most of the people have bought their homes. Removing the fences is dangerous in a sense. We have dogs, kids, it's not safe to play in a backyard that you can't secure with a fence. We have a drainage easement next to us. It's, you know, if we're not able to fence off and secure the area, it is dangerous. And my wife and I purchased our home understanding that we had a fenced-in backyard for, you know, dog and family. So we want to make sure that we're able to keep that. And I have a few conclusions here and then one more point. So it doesn't affect our need to plant trees at all. We're going to plant trees whether or not this is approved to the original site stipulations. Approving it would allow us to keep our fences. I've kind of said this before, denying it would, removal, financial cost. And the last thing here is, we had a hearing, and this is a little bit more background on, you know, this other business. We had a hearing last year where we want to just remove the undisturbed buffer altogether, and that one was denied. And at first, I didn't realize why it was denied, but then I talked to some of our neighbors behind us, talked to the commissioner and landscape architect, and the concern was over privacy. So we want to be able to have trees in between us. So I originally spoke to some of the people behind us about maybe reducing the buffer, but they were still concerned about privacy. So this is a compromise for us to say we will replant all the trees to the original stipulation and just keep our fences. So this is a compromise with the neighbors behind us, chatting with as many as I could get a hold of. I wasn't able to talk to all of them, because not everyone answers their door when you knock on it. I have more slides. Okay, so I made this just to kind of go over some opposition points from our hearing last year, just to make sure there's no confusion between this hearing and last year's hearing. So one of the opposition points last year was, I don't want trees removed from my backyard view. We're not removing HEs, we're planting trees. The other one was impacting a stream buffer and causing flooding. This is not on a stream buffer. It would not impact flooding. The last one is, this is not in compliance with the neighborhood HOA. So I've spoken with our HOA president. She supports this. She does not support us removing fences. It would reduce property value. It does not look good. So our HOA is in support of this. And the last one is, I received an email from one of the Arden Chase residents, we're not, he was concerned that there'd be construction in his backyard, and I explained to him, we're not doing any construction. There would be construction if it were denied, because we'd have to remove our fences. But, you know, the only construction would be just planting of trees, which we have to do anyway. And that's all I have. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Was there anyone here in opposition? Okay, not seeing any. John, can you let us know what staff's recommendation is?
The chairman, board, the staff would recommend the board commissioners approve this amendment, subject to changing the 20-foot undisturbed buffer to a 20-foot landscape buffer, which may include a fence. And number two, county arborist to approve the 20-foot landscape buffer, which may include two rows of trees to be installed within 90 days.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Yes, thank you. Bragg and I have visited, and Mr. Shepherd has been very gracious to let us in and talking to his neighbors. And I support staff's recommendation, and I do, but I do want the final site plan or landscape plan to be approved by the county arborist and district commissioner. And this time around, we only had one email about the buffer, and I believe Bragg spoke with him yesterday, and there was a misunderstanding, but he's, everybody's, I think, on board now. And it is a privacy fence and also security for his beautiful dog. So I make a motion to approve OB 54 to revise the stipulation of 20-foot undisturbed buffer in the rear of the lots 18 to 23 and Lot 26 with a landscape buffer, with final approval of the two rows of trees that will be planted by the county arborist and district commissioner. And all other stipulations and conditions remain in effect.
All right, is there a second?
Can I do it?
Second. Any additional discussion, Commissioner Gamble?
Do we want to put a timeline to which this needs to be completed by? And I know the arborists like to plan at certain times of years.
Right. And we did discuss that, but I forgot to mention it. So I think the fall is the time to plant, and I, but I'm not sure how soon he can, should we, let's say, till the end of the year, till December 31st.
Well, I know, but depending on what they plant, it's either best for the fall or early spring. So what if we say nine months from today? Because typically, they don't plant in the winter months.
No.
But that's going to, because if he's going to do a variety-
Okay. Can I call Bragg up? Because I know you've talked with Mr. Shepherd, and what's a reasonable timeframe for what he's planning?
Bragg, Vaughn, Community Development, I'm the landscape architect. Commissioner Gamble, I think you're on the right track there. Depending on what they plant, I was actually kind of counting before we started, six months would be the end of May, or excuse me, end of March. There are plants that, yes, could go in in fall. Maybe December, January might not be as best a time to plant, but then before it starts warming back up in, say, April and early May, they'd probably want to get them in, in that window, so from now to toward the end of March. And I believe last time, we were kind of talking about six months when they submitted last May, which would have took us to Thanksgiving. And then we started discussing doing this again. So I would almost say six months. I think that's a reasonable time.
Okay. Mr. Shepherd, are you agreeable to that?
I am, yes.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Then, everything be planted within the next six months from today's date.
So we'll modify the motion to include that, and the second is in support of that? Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble. Any other comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. I believe that's the last matter on our agenda. Thank you for tuning in. Our meeting is now adjourned.